Dependents, thank you. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. We have a nice full house, so it's so good to see you all. Thanks for being here. All right, moving right along, we have approval of minutes, February 12, 2020. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Fenely, seconded by Mrs. Newhouse. All in favor? That is unanimous. We have approval of grant, the Wilmington Educational Foundation Grant to the Annual Wilmington Public Schools STEM Fair in the amount of $2,000. Is there, I'm just trying to see if there's anyone out there. There's no one out there to discuss, right? Okay. Is there a motion to approve? Thank you, Mrs. Burns, seconded by Mr. Sumaha. All in favor of accepting? Excellent. Thank you very much, Wilmington Educational Foundation. We have an approval of out-of-state field trip, Wilmington High School, grade 10 through 12, trip to Budapest, Vienna, Prague, and Munich, April 15 through the 24th, 2021. Is there a motion? Mrs. Burns? Is there a second? Mr. Sumaha, is there a discussion?
I just want to say how impressed I am with this proposed field trip. I think it's a fantastic experience for our students to participate. I did have a question that, as I, this question often comes up for me. I'd like to know what supports are in place or what, I'm not sure what the right word is, for students who, disadvantaged students with regards to this. I know there'll be fundraising. I think what I'd be interested in, absolutely not for this meeting, but maybe in the future to get some feedback to make sure that our programs and field trips are truly accessible to interested, to all interested students. So I would just like to, you know, see if we could get some of that information, some of that data, and just want to make sure that it truly is accessible and making sure that there are other resources that students can, you know, acquire, you know, to be able to, you know, have this opportunity as well.
Thank you for the question, and certainly it's a very valid one. In broad terms, it has surfaced this issue, I think, that you're speaking of in terms of how do we ensure that opportunities for our students are indeed accessible for all and not limited by financial means. And it's something that has, on a couple of occasions over the last few months, come to, certainly come to my attention. I think it's an area that we do need to be more mindful of and make sure that all of our staff are aware that when they're offering an opportunity for a student that is, requires funds, that there's appropriate provisions and the communication of such to families to make sure that they know how and where to access those. I'm not suggesting that that's not happening everywhere, but I think it's something that internally we can make sure that we bolster to ensure that even the new staff member that's joining us next year or a veteran one is aware that we should be, should be mindful of that when we're building costs for trips.
That's great. Thank you, Dr. Burns.
Any other discussion or question? I just had one quick question on the grades team. It says, "Open to classes 2021, 22, and 22." Is that 23? On the field trip approval form. 23?
Should be 23.
Great, thank you. So we can make that change?
Yes.
Excellent. And are we, do we, do you want to say anything? No? Okay. Put you on the spot. We're very excited. Wonderful, and some wonderful application. Thank you so much.
I'm happy to take your children wherever you want.
Does that often stand for school committee members?
So we have a.
Requested to adult trips.
All in favor of approving the out-of-state field trip? That is unanimous. Thank you. It's okay with the committee. I'd like to skip over the second reading. There are quite a few questions, and I would rather just wait until we get to the first reading. Is that okay? Okay. So that brings us to warrants G416, G417, R221, L54, 55, 56, 57, FS23, and 24. Is there a motion? Mrs. Newhouse, seconded by Mr. Bjork. All in favor? That is unanimous. Payroll ending 129, 2020, and 212, 2020. Mrs. Burns, seconded by Mr. Ragsdale. All in favor? That is unanimous. CBO8. Mr. Ragsdale, thank you. Mr. Fenely, thank you. All in favor? That is one abstention. And sped 17, and sped 18. Thank you, Mr. Sumaha, seconded by Mr. Fenely. All in favor? And that is three abstentions. Mrs. Dix, you got that? Thank you. All right, what we're all here for. The Wilmington High School Robotics Team presentation. Come on down. We've been anxiously anticipating this presentation, and we thank you for being here.
Good evening. My name is Julie Kim. I am the Science CTL. I'm also one of the mentors for the robotics team. This is the other mentor.
Hi, I'm Marlene King. I'm a physics teacher here at the high school and also the other mentor of the team.
So our team is going to do a brief introduction of themselves, their role, and then after that, we're going to do a little demo. And while we're doing the demo, we'll have one of our co-presidents talk about what the game strategy was this year.
All right, I'm Hayden Kane. I'm a junior. This is my second year on robotics, and I'm the co-president of the team.
Hi, my name is Alex. I'm in 12th grade. This is my second year on the team, and I am the other co-president.
Hello, I'm Andy. I'm a senior on the team, and I'm the software lead, and I have been for the last two years.
Thanks.
Hello, I'm Jason. I'm a junior on the team. This is my first year, and I'm a driver for the robot.
Hi, I'm Tim. I'm the strategy lead for the team, and I've been on it for two years.
Hi, my name is Leah. I'm a senior, and I'm engineering notebook lead, and I've been on the team for two years.
So we're going to have, yep, to talk about the strategy, and then we'll have our drivers.
All right, so basically, the game is, it's a timed game. There's three phases. There's the autonomous mode in the beginning, where you start. That is hands-off the controllers. It's all pre-programmed. That is generally what gets the most points, so we put a lot of time and effort into programming that. It's a big improvement from last year. Certainly, the whole robot is. We've certainly learned a lot. Second is, we call it teleop, which is driver-operated, drive around trying to score points. And the final is end game, which is, there's certain areas you can end in or things you can do to score additional points. So the purpose of the game, or the goal of the game, is to get the blocks. You can see over there, we've got, it's a yellow block on the big build plate there, and we're trying to stack as many blocks as possible. You get points for your tallest tower. We also have a, we also have one of these capstones. If you put it on the top, you'll get additional points. So there's also other things, driving under certain bridges, parking in certain areas, that can all get you points throughout the game.
Do you want to narrate what's happening? Sure. So as one of our team members, please, we're going to activate the robot.
Okay, so basically, at the start of the game, the robot is, assuming you're past the autonomous mode, and you have a minute and a half to pick up blocks and stack them onto the corresponding color. You're either on blue team or red team. And during this phase, you're just trying to stack it as high as you can. There's other things you can do. There's three bridges, and depending on if you go under the right bridge, you get more points for what you've done. And then at the end of it, you have the capstone over here, and if you put it, whatever tower you put it on, every single block under it gets counted as another point. Usually, points can range from like 1 to 20 points, depending on how hard the task is. In the autonomous mode, usually that's where the hardest tasks are, because pre-programming something is a lot harder than just controlling it. And so that's that.
Yep, yeah. So if you can talk about, and then we can pass around our notebook, and the process we actually, in terms of documenting our role.
Hi, do you, if you want, you can just pass this. Yeah. Hi, yeah, that's, other than the, anyway, other than the competition itself, there are ways of scoring awards for our team, essentially. And one of the ways that we do that is through the engineering, oh, the engineering notebook. The engineering notebook is a, is a big collaborative document that you present to the panel of judges, and they will, they will score you based off of different criteria. They've got different awards that they hand out at the end. We have been lucky enough to actually have gotten three awards, two control awards for our coding, and one runner-up for an Inspire Award, which was, I was very grateful for. Yeah, and the engineering notebook pretty much catalogs everything that we've done through our engineering, our robotics year, so, yeah.
It's coming for you, family.
The awards are very important, because Inspire Award will get you to states and will move you on. So because we got runner-up to the Inspire Award, we will be moving on to states in March. And only our second year, it's really awesome. Does anyone have any questions?
Stick it in my school committee packet.
Questions, comments? We're all in awe, that's for sure.
Very, very excited about this, so.
Congratulations. Mr. Ragsdale?
I have a comment about the engineering notebook, which is that I love that this is part of it, that it's not, because it shows that it's not just about, here's our result, we have this robot, and we're going to drive it around, but it really demonstrates the engineering process that you go through week by week, as far as the, you know, the setbacks and the successes and what you did to solve problems and the troubleshooting and the documentation of it. I feel that that's a really important part of it and really important lessons for the students to learn and something to present. I'm not just saying that because my daughter's in charge of the engineering notebook at the middle school.
He spent 10 hours at a competition, but he knows that we're in the joys.
Other questions or comments from the committee? I just, I talked to, to Ms. Kim at the open house for high schoolers coming in, and she told me a lot, the time you spend after school. Can you just talk to us a little bit about what your week might look like preparing?
Yeah, sure. So we have, we've been meeting every week pretty much since August for an average of eight to 10 hours a week, so that's cumulatively over 200 hours on the robot. And we start out by designing, looking at other robots, trying to design our own ideas that will help us win the competition. And that's just the first process. Then after that, we start prototyping. We do several mechanical and design prototypes. And then we go into the building, and the building is a long process. You saw the arm on the front that has a cascading elevator. That's in its third phase, I think, so we've rebuilt that many times. But I think it's really, it's a massive time commitment. I mean, we have, all of our members are very dedicated, and we have tons of hours in it. And it's because it's, I think we're very fortunate to have this program at the high school and middle school, because before, there's, there's engineering club and all that, but there's not, you didn't have that competition aspect that made you strive to be better at it. So now we have this robot, we're all learning. Many of us have learned how to program, how to do the engineering design process. So we've been very, we're very grateful for the opportunity to have the club here. And we've, our competition is the seventh, and over this next week, we'll be just tidying up things, making sure, testing for efficiency and making sure that everything will run according to plan at the competition.
That's great. Thank you.
So like Hayden said, our state's competition is at Natick High School on March 7. The opening ceremonies will be there around 7:30 to check in and go through inspection, but the opening ceremony will be at 10:30, so if we can get a lot of Wilmington people just to support our team, it'll be awesome. It is a long, maybe a 10, almost 12-hour day, because they do a series of matches. And then from the results of those matches, they play about five, then we get to the elimination round. And then whoever is eliminated, you know, the winners will then go on to Worlds. So this is pretty amazing that we got here so far so fast, and really, the team, the team makes us stay till 6, 7, 8 o'clock at night on a school night, which is really late, but we love it. Thank you.
Mr. Sumaha?
Can I just add that my son is in 8th grade, and he's, for the connection between the middle school and high school, it has been fantastic. It's probably the game he's most excited about for when he transitions to high school next year, so, you know, congratulations.
What's his role?
It's Nick, Nick Sumaha, software.
All right, nice. We'll be looking for him. And Eleanor in two years.
Thank you. We are so deeply proud of you, and we are so grateful for your leadership and your time with this club, and it's very exciting to have seen it before it even started and to see how far you've come so quickly. It is such an honor, and it's such an honor to have you here. So thank you, thank you. Good luck. We will be cheering you on. Do you want to say something?
Yeah, that's all right. Thank you, Ms. Kim, and all of our students for being here. We wish you the best of luck, and we are so proud indeed of your accomplishments thus far, and we thank you for representing Wilmington proudly, as we know you will. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And that brings us to our superintendent's report. Dr. Brand?
Yes, thank you, and again, good evening, everyone. There are a few items to bring to your attention under item 5 this evening, and for those members of the community that might be interested in some of these, they are contained within the packet for this evening. First, Global Child 2020 Spring Class Update. You'll note a memo in there that provides a quick overview of the fact that we have 38 students who are currently learning Spanish, which is an increase, as noted, slight increase from 2019. I'm not to be sure exactly what that number was, but nevertheless, the fact that it's on an upward trend is terrific. As I've come to learn, this is certainly a much beloved program and an opportunity for, for certainly some of our students to participate outside of the regular school day, obviously on a terrific endeavor. So informational, but to draw your attention to that. Item 5B, there was not anything specific in the packet, but I just wanted to spend a couple of moments providing you a brief update on the Director of Athletic Search. As you know, that is ongoing. We, the district are in the process of searching for and looking to hopefully appoint a finalist. A couple of updates in terms of the activity that led into the February break, as well as where we're at right now currently. We, first off, to back up in the process, we have three semifinalists, as I think that you are aware. The latter stages of our search include site, included site visits, rather, to the respective districts of each of the three semifinalists. Not only do those semifinalists visit the district, as members of the community will be aware, and again, thank you to WCTV's partnership. They broadcast those interviews, and I believe we had approximately 150 members of the community who provided feedback, which, which is certainly terrific, and there's indeed, underscores the high level of interest here. The site visits that we then do, there's a small group that accompany myself, and in this case, Ms. Peters, and I'll point out and like to take the opportunity to thank Mr. Brian Kane, who's here, was here. He left. He was here in the audience, as well as Ms. Laura Stinson, Andrew Stern Armstrong, Ms. Peters, and myself were the five members who had the pleasure to visit each of our respective candidates, where we had the opportunity to gather more feedback as part of this selection process. This is what I think a very important part of leadership searches, and we are in the final stages right now of carefully reviewing all of that information, and I want to underscore that point, that people take time to provide feedback. I can assure you, it's carefully and thoroughly reviewed, as is the reference checks, not just a perfunctory part of the search, but an important piece of information gathering. It's my hope that towards the end of this week, or if not, at the latest, the beginning of next week, we'll be at a point to be able to announce, hopefully, a finalist to the Wilmington community, and of course, I'll keep you updated on that. On the note of searches, item 5C, just moving on, the West Intermediate School Principal Search, there is an item in your packet, and I'm just going to myself draw attention to that. As you know, we are gearing up for the search, we are gearing up for the search for the West Principal. That posting is out right now. It comes to a close, it comes to a close at the end of this week, and, I'm sorry, I've lost my.
You need the phone.
Yeah, no, I had it, and thank you.
My online's a little bit rusty.
We, we have approximately 50 applicants that have submitted applications. We have a search committee, and the item of information just to bring to your attention is the, those that are serving on the committee. As you'll note, there are parent guardian representatives, West Intermediate School teachers. I will add and point out to the school committee that we've had one addition for the teachers, and that addition is Catherine Maella. I hope I said her last name correctly, and so she is added into the group. Christine Murray and Suzanne Sullivan, representing respectively the administrators. They will begin their work next week reviewing those applications, and we'll start that process, and I'll keep you posted as we move forward on that. Thank you.
Just a quick question, if you can share. Were there, how many, were you, are you able to tell us how many internal candidates may have applied?
For the West search?
Yes.
I do not know.
Okay, thank you.
I do not know, and if I may, just to take, that's, the respective screening committee will, will dive into that. The feedback that was collected, as, not just for the West search, if I may, to expand upon the process, but for all of these leadership, leadership searches, the feedback that's gathered by constituents helped make the profile, if you will, of each candidate, and that will hold no differently for the West search. And from those candidates, they will then, that committee will then make a selection of, whittling that down to a reasonable number to interview, based upon what people are looking for in the feedback that's been gathered to date.
Thank you.
Unless there are any other questions? All right, thank you. Item 5D, the emergency evacuation and reunification for the Wilmington Public Schools. I just thought it seemed timely to spend just a couple of minutes briefly to share with our, our community a few things that we've been working on. This was, this was a real-life incident that, as a district, and specifically, obviously, for one of our schools that went through, but it just seemed like an opportune time to take just a few moments and talk with the committee, but more broadly, the community about this. A little while back, as many probably are aware, the Woburn Street School had a, a small issue with, with the need to evacuate. Nothing serious, no damage, and that's the good news. And the also good news is that it was an opportunity to learn from, the experience, and, and we did just that. The senior leadership team debriefed with the Wilmington Police following this incident, and as I have said in some previous correspondence, it went extremely well. You know, in short, for a community member who might be tuning in for the first time saying, "What happened?", we had that experience where we needed to evacuate a building, transport the entire building, students and staff, to another location, and then figure out how we were going to reunify students with their parents or guardians. This is the kind of thing that districts should be planning for. We do, and we have been, but this was a great opportunity firsthand, sort of a low-stakes situation, to walk through this, and that we did, and I'm pleased to say, thanks to the support of many, we did very well. And that's not just my own assessment, but inclusive of the police as well. Students were transported here to the high school, which is, for a number of obvious reasons, the primary site if we need to empty, if you will, a school building, and as mentioned, we debriefed. Evacuation and reunification, I think these are just, you know, again, taking the lead of this example, important for our community and our parents and guardians to know. And there's a difference, of course, the evacuation, that's fairly straightforward, but that can come, and that can come about through a number of different means, not just fire, and those are some of the realities that schools face. If power goes out in the middle of the day in May or June, that might be one thing. If power goes out that leads to a loss of heat in the middle of January, that might be a different thing. Reunification, as mentioned a little bit earlier, is that process by which we have to oversee pairing back up, reuniting a student with his or her parent or guardian. And certainly, obviously, throughout the process, we remain in that important role of making sure that students are safe, attended to, and supervised. When evacuation happens, and so this, the idea here is, should this happen again, and hopefully, it never does, or hopefully, it doesn't for many a years, but should it? Generally speaking, the high school, for lots of reasons, is the primary and obvious choice to evacuate our, our other buildings. And the great thing that we've come to recognize is that the capacity here, and specifically the design of this building, is optimal. If there was a, a power outage on the side of town that might need to think about relocation of the middle school, the West, and the Boutwell, we could do that, and we could do that all here. And so that's, I think that's a good news thing, and for members of our community, thinking about the high school is the, the general priority place in which we would, we would think about this. Obviously, if the high school has to be evacuated, that's a little bit different. I mentioned some of this already, but the realities that we contend with, and when we're thinking about planning for emergency and emergency preparedness, these are the kind of things that we're thinking about. Evacuation to Wilmington High School, we have the great support of our transportation company and, and the vendor, and that was no different. In this situation, we had buses on scene within, I think it was 15 minutes or thereabouts, maybe 20, and, and so that's a great, a great facet that we can rely upon. The tremendous partnership that I have come to hear so many times, but saw in action through this incident with police and fire, who were extremely supportive throughout the process, and, and really, a collective effort with school leadership to, to make all of this happen. And in the future, should this happen, obviously, this would play out in a very similar way. Of note, when this incident happened for Woburn Street, we had a number of students, not all, but a number of students who hadn't been fed lunch, and, and so with the support of food services, that was able to happen. This is the piece that I think is really important to, to point out, and specifically for the community. In the event that there needs to be the movement of students or an entire building to another location like the high school, we recognize that sometimes parents or guardians might get a little bit anxious about that, but what we went through and experienced is the fact that reunification is an important process, and we need to approach that diligently, as we did in this particular case. And, and the design, again, of this building really helped facilitate ensuring that every student who left was leaving with whom they should be. And it's a cross-check of guardianship, who's on the roster, all of those kind of things, and that's, that's indeed the reunification process. Communication, I'll just, the last piece here, and this, again, was a, a real-life opportunity to think critically about this. It's understood, and more particularly in this day and age, that when things happen, people want to know immediately. That's understood, and it's also understood that through my office, usually, every effort will be made to try and communicate as quickly as possible. Folks do need to keep in mind, of course, that the first and foremost need is to attend to the situation. That will always take precedence, but certainly, the one thing that we learned through this is that with our communication system, when we have, when we have parents and guardians who are appropriately signed up and have registered their, their numbers, through text, through the phone call and emails, we have a multitude of means in which to push out messages. And in, in the course of this specific situation with Woburn Street, I believe it was at least four, through Ms. Dixie's help, who were, were disseminating those messages. And I, I think that they helped, and from the feedback that I received, generally speaking, that seemed to have been the case. So sometimes patience is, is certainly helpful, and we'll, we'll do the best to be as clear as we can with communication in a timely way. And I think finally, just a couple of pieces to point out, and, and really, the crux of this is, is for, for our community, is should there need to be an evacuation in the future, we have a plan, it's been reviewed, and, and, and we have clarity around how we will go about this and how we will unite, reunite, rather, students with their, their parents. And so certainly, that last piece of Aspen as the, as the primary means to communicate is really a key piece. So meant to be informational. If you have any questions, I'm, I'm happy to take them, but just thought it was an opportune time to share with our community.
Mrs. Burns?
I just want to comment and express my sincerest appreciation to the administrators at the Woburn Street, as well as the central office, in handling the situation. It is, I think it's, it's a true testament to how prepared we are for these unexpected emergencies and the timeliness of evacuating and. the timeliness of evacuating and getting our students and staff into a safer environment. And I can't express, I can't say enough about that, and the emergency response of the Police and Fire Department within town to get over there quickly to, you know, assess the situation. But I sincerely am grateful for keeping all of our kids safe, and just the teamwork that took to coordinate that many number of bodies. It's, I am sincerely grateful, and I know it's shared by many parents from the feedback I've heard, so I thank you all.
Thank you.
Mr. Fenn. I would second what Ms. Burns said, and also thank you for this. I think it's, it was, it's great information, and as a school committee member, I'm glad to see that the district is prepared for these things. I mean, I assumed we were anyways, but as you guys know, my kids both go to the Woburn Street School, and so to see it from the other side, as a parent, I couldn't have been happier with how the process played out. The communication was great, the, I'm sorry, what do we call it, reunification of kids and parents, once I got to the high school, was fantastic. Everybody, all the principals, assistant principals from the whole district pitched in. It was great. I was really impressed, and if it's any, of any interest, the only feedback I got from my kids was that they were mad I came to pick them up early, because they were watching a movie in the auditorium, and that was the greatest thing that ever happened to them, so. But all joking aside, the administration, the district, the whole team did an amazing job, and it was great to see that happen, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Raxton?
I was wondering if you could talk a little more about what discussions have happened so far about the high school needing to be evacuated, because it seems like that's, for all the obvious reasons that you laid out, this is not the natural place for other buildings to evacuate to, if it's unavailable and the high school itself has to be evacuated. There was, in the slides, there is, it's talked about using other school buildings and other community spaces, but I don't know if you can give a little more detail on how that would be handled.
Yeah, I think a little Mr. Rosario certainly perhaps could chime in if I forget something. It's been, as I've come to learn, certainly a point of some discussion for some time now, understandably, and I think that there's been a couple of different locations that have been explored, and, you know, the default presumption is that we could always have access to other schools, should that not be a larger issue that requires, you know, a power outage or a gas leak on one side of town. So I think there's the reality that there's always that ability to even segment if we needed to, you know, by grade or something like that, the entire high school. In terms of actually securing, if you will, another facility, I don't think we have anything formalized.
No, at one point, quite a few years ago, we had talked to some local places, but I don't think anything's been finalized since then, so that's one of the things we have to do. We have a district safety committee, and one of the next projects, if you will, will be to reach out to certain areas, whether it's a church or some other large facility. If we had to evacuate the high school, would they be willing to house out students for a period of time? So that's our next, next project, as far as the district safety committee.
Good. And I think that even, even if we're able to, you know, physically house enough, you know, we have enough capacity in the other seven schools to be able to distribute the high school, that's still a much more complicated logistical process, deciding who goes where, and the reunification, what school is my kid at. It's, it's very easy to say that if it's anywhere else from here, it's always going to be at the high school. You're going to go pick up your kid at the high school, that's where your kid is, and it's much more complicated if it's anything else, and if we're spreading out into multiple other buildings. And so that's, of course, you know, again, even less likely than the other situations we're talking about, but I think that we feel more, you know, everyone feel better knowing exactly what we're going to do, even in the less, least convenient possible scenario.
I just have a really quick question. How often does the district safety committee meet? And would that, will we be getting a presentation at the end of this year, the update as to the work that's trans, I mean, that, those pieces of information that can't be, that can be shared with the board, would that be something that we could get at maybe by, by June, or whenever it's appropriate, mind you, but at some point?
So to answer the first question, it's not quite monthly, but probably approximately six times, I would say. And building safety committees, keeping in mind, that's different than the district, district safety committees that are meeting perhaps more regularly, and that might depend on the school and the respective needs. In terms of pulling together sort of highlights, if you will, of the work or the areas of focus, it's certainly something, certainly something that we could do towards the latter part of the spring.
That would be great. Thank you so much.
Sure. The last item that I had, not listed on the superintendent's report, but just-
Sorry, I actually had one more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Before we move on, just have one more comment, which is that, under the communication, I think that one, and of course, not, not that you can control it necessarily, but I think one thing, at least one factor that's worth noting, is that the moment you have an evacuation, Woburn Street, the kids are generally too, too little. They're going to, you know, people are going to hear about that from the district. But once you get into the middle, you know, potentially middle school or high school, then, you know, word is going to be going around, parents are going to be texting their kids, kids will be texting their parents, and it might be worth having some communications and expectations for especially our older students around that kind of communication in those situations, just part of preparing them for, for what's happening in those situations. And just a note to the community to, you know, try and, try and let the district's communication work, and not to just immediately, you know, run to social media and be, you know, just be spreading rumors around. It's always tough in a situation when you want information, you want to know if anyone else knows more information, so the easiest thing is to put something out there and say, "Has anyone else heard, you know, heard about this?" But I would, you know, hope that people would, as much as possible, try to, you know, focus on letting the district do the communication and following this plan that's been laid out.
I appreciate that. I think that is very important feedback, and yes, if it's, if it was a different age group with more access, no question, that becomes a whole different level of concern. And I think just to that point, again, to not overemphasize enough, for those, for those community members, parents and guardians who are comfortable adding their cellphone number to Aspen, and if open to receiving texts, I do think that that's probably without question the most expedient way to get messaging out, and will hold the best chance to try and ensure that we're staying ahead of the social media buzz, and that will be incredibly impossible, but that's, I think, the important piece there. We've talked to staff about social media as well through these presentations, which I didn't mention, but that have happened to all of our, for our staff in all of our schools. Thank you for all of your feedback. Finally, again, not listed under the packet, but just to circle back to, and forgive me if I, we knew this, or I knew this and I forgot, but we are looking for one volunteer, Mr. Rosario, two, sorry, two volunteers from the committee to participate as part of the Food Service Association's contract negotiations, and again, forgive me if you, if you indicated your willingness to, to serve, but we do need two members, so. Thank you, Ms. Newhouse.
What's the other, what's the other negotiation right now?
This is, would be the only one this year.
Oh, this is the only one?
Yes.
You think it's something different?
Sorry, okay.
That's okay.
I can volunteer.
Thank you. And that is it for my, sorry, somewhat lengthy report.
That brings us to public comment. Is there any public comment? There's lots of people in the public. All right. We will move on to Old Business 7A, proposed 2020-2021 school year calendar.
Thank you very much. There is, there are two items in the packet this evening, one, a revised calendar, and a brief memo. I'll draw your attention to the memo. And certainly, again, I appreciate the opportunity to have this ongoing conversation here over the last couple of meetings. It's the hope that, again, for reminder of the community, it's necessary for the school committee to approve the calendar for the following school year, so in this case, 2021 school year. The feedback that was provided more specifically last time was certainly well noted, with the recognition seemingly overall to the, the efforts of the district to try and provide more, I've called professional time or professional collaboration time. It's also recognized that the proposal that originally included four additional early release days from our current calendar, four additional, again, because we certainly have had for some, some time, a number of early release days. But it was felt that perhaps that might be too many, and in particular, some concern or question, if you will, around the location of the last, the fourth one in the first part of June. To that end, I'm proposing to you the removal of that June early release date, as you last saw it. And in the memo, I've tried to make that adjustment and reflect what, when the dates would be, should you approve this calendar for the early release days for curriculum and professional development related. And then the early dismissals that are built into the calendar for conferences at the elementary and middle school level. And the highlights, just to point out, certainly the committee I know is aware, but for members of the community, around sort of what the overall calendar looks like, generally speaking, and the highlights of that. So I'm happy to take any questions if you'd like, and I appreciate, again, the opportunity to have engaged in the discussions we have around this over the last couple of meetings.
Questions, discussion? Mr. Samaha?
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate the calendar, and I know how much work is involved in all of this. You know, the, the concern that I had, I've had sort of all along, is what is the impact of so many early release days on working families? I think that we already have a significant number of early release days, and I think adding more is sort of, is putting too much of a burden on families. Sort of just doing it out, right? Currently, this school year, there are, also, I wrote a couple of these things out. For next year, you're proposing September 1st, September 30th, October 21st, December 9th, January 27th, March 31st, May 5th, and then the last day of school as early release days for CIT. That's, am I correct?
Correct.
With that, okay. So if you take that into account, right, so that's, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, that's nine days, right? And then you have the, and then if you had a, say, a third grader, you're adding two more days, and so now you're up to eleven. And say you have a third grader and a sixth grader, you go from eleven days to thirteen days. You know, and it's, when you sort of look at all the days that that hypothetical Wilmington family has for, for early release days, it's, it's like from late September to late March, it's almost like every other week, there's an early release day. And again, I'm not exactly sure that, that afternoon, if it's professional development, how effective that professional development can be. As a teacher, I know that for me, half-day professional development has not always been the most effective. It's usually full day that seems to be more effective to me. Anytime I've had any sort of professional development that's really impacted what I do in the classroom, it's been full day. So I'm not necessarily sure that there is, there's, there's a lot of early release. I understand the need for professional development time. I understand the need for teachers to collaborate with each other, especially when you're talking, you know, special ed, service providers, you know. But I think that, you know, I actually think that we should be having the discussion about how do we reduce the number of early release days, rather than adding them on, because I just think that it's not, you know, it's, it's really tough on families, and I, and I just, I think we're going in the wrong direction by adding, you know, anymore. So I mean, I'm not, not really in favor of the calendar as it stands.
Mrs. Burns?
I can't help but echo your concerns. And thinking about this as well, we have to start somewhere. We can't just say, I understand the impact of families, and I think we have to find the balance. But I think we also have to meet the need of teachers and staff in order to be able to educate our kids, be able to communicate with one another so that they can, they can consistently deliver the curriculum to the diverse learners that we have in-house. In saying that, I, you know, my, as I said before, my initial concern was the amount of, you know, we've built and changed our schedules over the past nine years that I've sat on the board to accommodate more learning time within the classroom, and here we are trying to meet the need of the staff, of which they've clearly said, "We need more time to collaborate, we need more time to build the skills, to deliver," because what we're dealing with now, and as we're, we've seen within our annual budget, the, especially, for example, the need of the social emotional piece, it's only growing. And we need to be able to educate our staff to be able to support our students within the classroom so that they can access it. Now, I, I do agree with you on the points that you've noted. I can't refute it, especially not being an educator myself, but I think, I think this, we need to do something in, in the immediate future, and I think finding other solutions that may not have such an impact to student learning, you know, effective professional development, it's a start. And I think we do need to take that action to ensure that the student, our students get what they need consistently across the board from our staff. We need to give them the opportunity to collaborate and do so. I do think there are other things that we can look for as we move forward in the future to work on this, whether it be schedule changes, time changes, which is another aspect that we can consider. I do think that, I view this as, personally, I would like to see, I think we need more changes as we talk about time and whatnot. I don't know about schedule changes and whatnot, but, and I think it's premature to even touch upon certain ideas, but I think we need a place to start, see how it rolls, and see if there are any other opportunities that we might be able, in the next year's calendar, you know, look towards viable solution, and I think we need to look outside of the box as to what this can look like. And granted, it's not just this board that makes that decision, there are other impacts that we have to consider in that, but I think it is reasonable, and I think we could, we might be able to find a better balance moving forward, but we, we need to try to find a place to start. And that's kind of my position. I, I do, my concerns are your concerns, but I also, sometimes the biggest risks can be the most successful, most learning to, you know what I mean? I, that's where I stand at the moment, anyway.
Thank you. Mr. Bjork?
I find it interesting that you don't find half-day professional development to be extremely effective. I, I think that's, that's very interesting, because I also don't think half-day is terribly effective for the child. And I know we can, we were able to count it as a, as a full educational day, but it's generally, oftentimes, it's not. It's not utilized as well as it should be. And I'm going to throw something out there that is going to go nowhere, and is going to be unpopular, but maybe we need to look at, looking at the collaborative agreement with the teachers, and add a couple of days to the school year for them. I mean, really, that is, that's the best way not to adversely affect the children or the working parents.
Mr. Samaha?
I've spoken a lot, so.
Mr. Rex?
So I, I share many of the same concerns as Mr. Samaha, and just talked about them more at the last meeting, and he said them well, so I'm not just going to just repeat what he said so well. But I think that it is absolutely true that we are working, working with what we have, and have embarked on some ambitious plans for which we're hiring new staff in the budget that we just approved, that are part of our strategic plan, that is kind of guiding us for the next three years, in that it's more than just, professional development is part of it, but it's also, I think, the way that we've been phrasing it, professional collaboration, that we need time, not just for outside people to come in and, you know, do seminars, but time for just the members and staff and administrators that we have to collaborate with each other. And that's important so that we work on our, you know, consistency of curriculum. And there are, there are lots and lots of pieces and strategic initiatives that we have that, that require that kind of time and consultation and collaboration. And I think that one way that we can ask the community to kind of, you know, bear with these inconveniences that we recognize are a burden, is, as Steve was just starting to-
these inconveniences that we recognize are a burden, is, as Steve was just starting to say, that we, I think we do need to have a commitment to try and address some of this structurally when we can. And we're kind of, you know, we're, we're a little bit bound right now with our current school start times and our current contract, and we can't do anything about that for the coming school year that we're talking about, but the school year after that, we may be able to do something about that, where we may be implementing some new start times, can perhaps align the end times of the district better to create more time that way. And as, I think, as Steve was saying, that, you know, we have to, when we go to the bargaining table the next time, that we need to look at potentially adding some additional staff days. That might be one way to alleviate this. And I think that if it doesn't feel that it's just a one-way crank, like we've now moved from so many, you know, six days or, you know, six days to nine days, and if it just feels that this is just a one-way crank, that just every year, it's just going to be more and more early release days added, even for very good reasons, that's hard to bear if you just think that this is just, this is just what it's going to be like coming down the road. And so I think that with a, with a commitment that this is what we feel needs to happen now to move forward with our, you know, with our education initiatives, then, but we have a commitment that we're trying to fix this problem at a more root level. I think that that's one way that we can, in, you know, in a better, better sense, go to our community and say that this is, this is the direction we want to go, but it's not where we want to end up in. And I, I would support the calendar for that reason in its current form.
I agree with Mr. Ragsdale. I think too many years, not only the last year or two, where we've been putting together this new strategic plan, where, you know, we have a lot of time and learning in different initiatives with, that need professional development, but for at least the last five years, you've heard over and over again how we need more collaboration with staff, we need more professional development added back into our budgets, we need to support that more. And I feel like our hands are tied with the collective bargaining agreement as it stands now, and the only way we're going to fix this for this coming school year is by adding in these half-days to get it done. And, you know, we could say, oh, sorry, we're not going to do it for another year because our hands are tied, but I feel like we're hurting our staff and we're hurting our students by not stepping up and adding in the time for our staff to have the professional development that we all, or I feel that most feel is needed. And if we can put our best foot forward and negotiate with the collective bargaining unit to add in more full days, I think that would be a great solution, but unfortunately for next school year, we can't do that. So without wasting more time, I feel like we need, I support this current calendar so we can give the teachers and the staff the time that they need to have professional development and collaborate for our students.
Any other discussion? Okay.
May I just add?
I don't know if I can do that.
Can I?
Sure, you can. I don't know about that. No, go ahead, you can add.
I, I appreciate your, your thoughtfulness around this, and just wanted to take the opportunity to respond specifically to Mr. Ragsdale's comment, which I think is an important one. I probably would ask the same if I was a member of the community. Is this, is the intention around this to continue the crank, to use your, use your term? But I understand it, and, and I would want to be clear that the answer is no, that, and perhaps maybe that would have been more helpful, I'm thinking here in hindsight, if I had tried to clarify that better in my, in my earlier memo. I see this as an interim measure, that I agree completely that full professional days are best, both as a parent and as an educator. But because we're, as has been pointed out, this sort of place of in-between right now with some constraints, if you will, that we're sort of around, it was the collective thinking, both myself and, and members of the leadership team, that this time is needed, has been pointed out, and because we're in this sort of place in-between, that this is an interim measure, at least for next year, has been pointed out, would be, would be optimal. Not long-term ideal, and again, to point out, not to next year be back to you with another six or eight, or take us down the path where some districts, and I think there are a few, but still some that may have one a week. That's not the intention here. It would not be the ideal, and it would not be what I would recommend to you. But as where we find ourselves right now, I appreciate the point of starting somewhere or, or continuing with where, what we do have in place, and that's what I see this as a proposal for you right now. So thank you again for your, your thoughtfulness.
Okay. I don't see a motion here, or on here, but is this a motion?
It would be a motion to approve.
So is there a motion to approve the 2020, 2021 school year calendar? Mrs. Newhouse, seconded by Mrs. Burns, all in favor? So all in favor, one, no? Okay, thank you. That brings us to new business, 8A. We have Wilmington 2020 Special Olympics update with some very special guests. Let me introduce you. We have Emma Ryan, Ashley McGilvery, and Jared Benoit. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for having us. So we have a nice PowerPoint that's about to come up behind us. Oh, and it's, I'm Jared Benoit, I'm a junior at Wilmington High School, I'm one of the students helping run Special Olympics.
I'm Ashley McGilvery, I'm a junior here at Wilmington High School, and I'm also helping run Special Olympics.
I'm Emma Ryan, I'm also a junior, and I'm also helping out with Special Olympics.
So to talk about our participants so far, in the first year, we had a total of 160 participants. In 2018, we had our highest amount at 231 participants. In 2019, those numbers dropped a little bit to 222. So far for this year, we have 44 registered participants, 33 of those are athletes, and 11 of them are partners. We anticipate a similar number of participants this year as we have had the past two years.
Mrs. Tucker and Ms. Bella Via are spearheading volunteer efforts for the Special Olympics. We are in debt to Mrs. Cassin, she put in a lot of effort last year to run the Special Olympics, but she's taking a step back this year for good reason. Me and Ashley are in charge of finding people who we think would fit best for student leaders, such as like station leaders, running the soccer stations, as well as finding people who would lead groups back and forth between stations. And then you want to say station?
Me and Ms. Hill have been working hard, we are working to trying to create training videos for all our student volunteers. They would entail how did they do the activities, as well as how to interact with the athletes, and how just to make sure everyone has a great time, and everyone knows all the information that we can get out. Next, we're moving on to fundraising. We're Wow Wilmington, We're One Wilmington, also known as WOW, will once again help fund raise for Special Olympics. They will be helping fund Olympic Town, which is a large town with a ton of different activities that really is a big hit every year. They have also agreed to cover up to $2,000 of our in-house expenses, expenses, which keeps us from having to request any of the money that goes directly to the Special Olympics. Some expenses include transport costs, lunch for the athletes, and waters for participants and volunteers. We have also received monetary donations, letters have been distributed to local businesses, and we have received a handful of donations already. So far, we have raised $1,300, and we have some new sponsors this year, thanks to the Wilmington Apple ad, including Wilmington House of Pizza, Uplift Inc., Ben Vito Asphalt, and John Sewer and Drain Cleaning Incorporated. It's awesome, thank you for your help. We're looking to use these three main social medias outlets for three main reasons. We would like, we are going to use a Twitter and Instagram as well as a Facebook. It is to show appreciation to donors, volunteers, and other associated members of the community, and thanking them for helping out. It is also a very good and big tool to help communicate and engage with the surrounding community in order to share information. It is also to appeal and solicit, solicit, solicit donations if we need. Basically, in short, it is free and easy to communicate information and promote the day to both towns Wilmington and Burlington. In addition, the social media accounts give the community members the ability to quickly ask questions regarding the event and receive a prompt response through direct messages. The account will be run by committee members, and we can schedule social media content in advance as well as give up, give up-to-date reports during the event. There also has been discussion about a student kind of doing a little takeover, is what a lot of Instagrams do, and on the Instagram story, will basically post what it is as a day as a partner with an athlete going through the field from activity to activity.
This is the official date and time for the Special Olympics. The rain date is May 11th, that's just in case, like, it rains on the date. Thank you so much for your time, and we'd love to see you all at the event.
Well done, thank you very much, that was excellent. Do you have questions or comments? Mrs. Newhouse?
I just want to say thank you for all your work. I know all the athletes truly enjoy it, and it's all because of your hard work.
Thank you.
Mrs. Burns?
Couple of questions for you. So first question for the community, how can we donate, how can people donate directly to this event at the high school? Or do they have to go through the national, the national chapter?
I'm not 100% sure on that. If anyone's interested in donating, I would email Diana Hill, her email is diana.hill@wpsk12.com, and I believe she is in charge of the, more of the fundraising, more of the paperwork, and she'll have more information on that.
Okay. And the second thing that I'm quite interested, any date yet for the dine-in at the 99s?
No, not yet. I know last year, we did a dine-in, Best Buddies and Special Olympics combined, and we did a dine-in the day of the Olympics. We're looking forward to do that again, but I believe we do have another dine-in ahead of time before the Olympics, and once we know the date, we'll let you all know.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, thanks for being here. All right, 8B, school start time committee update.
Sorry, there is, no, I'm just going to get the, right. Let me get that presented. Well, while we transition here, we are moving on to item 8B, school start time committee update. We have a number of folks who are here this evening, but I will, at this time, call up specifically Mr. Miranda, who's going to present, Ms. Bonnie Garassi, and Mr. Welch, if they could come forward. And I'll, I'll take the first few slides, and then I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to them. So this evening is meant to be a brief, but timely update to the community around the work of the school committee's start time that is underway. I'll, I'll take, I'll take you through the first few slides, and then I'll turn it over to our folks here who are at the table. Just to put this into some context again for, certainly for members of the community who may be turning into this for the first time and have no sort of sense or background as to what it is that we are talking about, this is an issue that is fairly, fairly prominent throughout, I would suggest, most of the United States in many pockets. And, and that is around the traditional, somewhat traditional secondary school start times, and increasingly considered more at odds with what research within the health community has unveiled. And those traditional start times, we here in Wilmington certainly represent or resemble. And, and so there's been increasing focus as of the last probably five or more years in terms of really calling into question whether or not those start times, our current start times, traditional start times are, are best for the social and emotional well-being of secondary school students. More closer to home, as has been mentioned in some brief correspondence, that really started back in the late winter or spring of last year, we are, we are falling somewhat out of step with the larger Middlesex Valley League, and that is, that's part and parcel of not only a focus on this work, but also a commitment that in fact the Middlesex Valley League, of which we are a part of, made a couple of years ago, and that was to have all schools read, readjust or adjust their start times to bring them more in line with what research calls for. And just some of the highlights within the league, you can see here of what the current start times are of a number of surrounding districts or close by nearby districts, Arlington, Burlington, Melrose, Watertown, and Winchester. So the time is upon us as a, as a community to explore this issue, and that's what this really is. This is a wide-scale effort that involves many, and I'll take this opportunity to, to thank for their presence here this evening, Mr. Reece Crowe, our transportation director, Lisa Federici, Bonnie Garassi, who's going to speak momentarily, Sula Fave, who's a community member here, Sheri Parker, Laura Stinson, Kevin Welch, Jonathan Miranda, Lisa Federici. They are, of course, some of the many folks who across our community have volunteered to be a part of this ongoing effort, and this is certainly, it's tremendous working with them, they are focused, they're dedicated, and they're working very hard behind the scenes to try and pull this together for the final report that will become, coming before this committee later this school year. This is not new, you have seen this as a, as a committee before, and that's the recap of where sort of the intentionality is around this work, and where it started and where it's going. There was a presentation to you back in September here in this, in this room about seeking your support to engage in this work. This has obviously implications potentially for our community of Wilmington. And so there's been a deliberate effort to try and keep the school committee apprised of this work from the get-go, and obviously seek your support, which you have, which you provided. You can see the dates that bring us up to where we are right now, and this indeed, February 26th is the date that was set out at the outset to provide you with an update on the work to, to date. There have been a number of meetings, both that whole group that you saw a moment ago together, and then those committees have been meeting individually, sometimes virtually, collaborating towards bringing this work towards where we're heading. And where we're heading is that final report, if all goes well and as planned, in May, that will be delivered here to you as a committee. I've talked about this before, but to point out to members of the community who might think that with that report will lead to change, should the committee as a whole wish to make any, and should those be part of the recommendations, and that's not the case, this would obviously hold the potential to be fairly significant if, as a school committee, you wanted to endorse any potential changes that might lead to rerouting of our transportation system or just drastic changes in terms of what our current start times are. But the intention is to allow you as a school committee the opportunity, of course, the administration, to take that report, whatever its findings are, reach out to the community to perhaps gather additional information, additional feedback, that's an important part of this process. And then hopefully, to provide you with enough information to be able to make a decision in the fall of 2020. And, and if indeed that includes any proposed start time changes, then those would take effect in the fall of 2021. So it's a long process, but for, I think, very good reason. With that, I'm going to turn it over, we have three groups, and each are going to provide you with a very brief update of, of the work to date, so.
I'm Bonnie Garassi, I'm the subcommittee chair for the research subcommittee. We're basically taking a two-pronged approach of first compiling the research and data about sleep and how it impacts students and their education, and then also taking kind of survey data of local districts, what they, what their districts look like as far as the numbers of schools and what their start, what their populations are, as far as how many students are in the district, and what their start times look like. So we're working on, this is just the screenshot of some data, some research that we've been taking that I think the outreach committee will talk about, how we're going to be trying to put this out for the, the entire community to be able to do their own research. We're just trying to make sure we're providing information for everyone on what experts are saying about sleep. I will say, a lot of the research does point towards adolescents do need additional sleep. However, I think that needs to be taken into account with what does the research say, and then what does that, how does that apply to Wilmington as a whole? So I don't think because a headline says start time should be later, that inherently means that's what we should be doing. And then, again, this is just a big, beginning of the spreadsheet we're working on to kind of figure out a way to compare Wilmington to all the other local districts and other districts in the, the state that have made the changes. So right now, obviously, this is kind of the rough draft form that we can create as a more user-friendly version, but giving the idea of, you know, what are the grades? but giving the idea of, you know, what are the grades, um, especially because given Wilmington and us, um, the fact we have an intermediate level, that changes up the amount of start times, the amount of schools. Um, so taking a look at which school, which districts have multiple elementary schools and multiple levels would be helpful. Um, and just a quick overview, um, we're finding that sleep isn't in, important. Um, and one of the tasks that we've taken on as a committee as well is to try to find some research us, uh, on the other side as well, to kind of ensure we're not getting a confirmation bias, uh, because there is quite a bit of research that is supporting, um, a change and moving it to later. Um, and just, this was one of the most striking pieces of research I came across, um, that was tied to not just the academics, which there is research showing that academics improve, but also just health and safety reasons that, um, when students get more sleep and start school later, all these very adverse, um, unsafe behaviors drop. I don't know if anyone wants to ask questions directly to me, or if we won't.
So, are you, thank you, I'm sorry. I'm just gonna, um, just a quick que- question. Now, the base of your subcommittee within this, is it all, um, medical-based research? Or is there any, and I might, I'm the cart before the horse gal, so please stop me if I'm ahead of myself. Um, is, has there been any outreach to those districts who have implemented this to sup, not only sup, um, well, you can't, it's already supported in research, but to also, um, add, you know, the results of the start time within those districts?
Yep.
Is that, is that part of your subcommittee?
Yeah, we're, we're pulling together, like I said, that spreadsheet of all the different local towns and districts have, have done this. Um, what we're finding is a lot of them are very, fairly recent, so it's still like they've only been doing it for one or two years.
And there's some that don't go live until next September.
Next year, so it's, it's kind of a very in-processing, but I think it's definitely something that, um, we could work on reaching out to other local districts and how their process is going.
I think your report started this year, so that might be a good resource to try.
Yep, yep, we've been following it and over because they're right in the thick of things, um, right now, and other, other districts as well.
Right, thank you.
Watching California, the whole state of California actually made it mandated, so we're kind of watching them carefully. So it's interesting.
That's one way to do it.
In that respect, our communication outreach, our, our section, our responsibility really is to keep this process as transparent and as open as possible, and to create an opportunity for the community, all stakeholders, parents, coaches, business leaders, anybody in the, in this community, any stakeholder, give them a voice, a place to find information. Um, we're working on ser, so basically we're working on a survey bank of questions. We're gonna eventually, probably sooner rather than later, come out with surveys for parent teachers, survey for families, survey for students. Um, we're looking at creating some sort of community forum, whether it be a town hall meeting, whether it be a Q and A through Twitter, but many different opportunities for everybody involved to have a voice and have a say, have a place to not only find information, but share information. Uh, most notably, we, we've come up with the release of the website, um, it'll be on the district page, district tab, under district information. Um, I think it's live tonight, if it's not live tonight, it'll be live first thing in the morning. It has, it's, it's, right now, we're at the very, very beginning of everything, so we're just trying to get out there and let people know what we're doing and give people an opportunity to know that we want it to be a, a community discussion. So we've got a bank of FAQs we haven't put out yet, we've got a bank of survey questions that we've developed in-house. Um, we've got the bank of research and resources, we've got, you know, all of our meeting notes and these will, will be up there and continue to be up there. There is talk of an email that's gonna be, um, we're discussing how to best to, to manage an email address and manage an email account so people can get directly in touch with, with all of us. We've talked a little bit about developing a pamphlet, or sure, just an actual hard copy or something to go out there. We've talked about hosting, hosting town hall meetings, um, social media, et cetera. So we're really in the, in the beginning stages of, of what we're doing. And our goal in our committee is just to make it as transparent and as open and as, as, um, accessible as possible.
Thank you. Um, I've been working on the scenarios and options, uh, development subcommittee, and one of the things we're doing is, as the other committees are doing the work, we're, uh, working with, uh, our transportation department and the local bus company to, um, develop possible scenarios of different combinations of different school times, just so we're prepared when, uh, when our research group, you know, really points us in the direction of the start time that we all feel is the most, most appropriate. In developing scenarios, we've tried to keep a very, uh, broad, um, base of what we are looking at, but we do have some just general parameters we're trying to stick to, and that one, one of those is that we really don't want any of our students at a bus stop before seven o'clock in the morning, so we're trying to stick to that. We also realize our secondary school times need to be based on our research. So although we're trying a lot of different things, what, what's, what is the final decision will be based on the research that's presented. Um, also keeping in mind, um, the high school end time because of all the extracurricular activities at the high school, we do have to be mindful of what time our high school students are leaving. Um, and, you know, just the general idea right now is we're gonna keep our school days the same length of time. So, um, we have to, you know, try to keep within certain parameters as we're developing these different scenarios. Um, this ne, this next chart is just, it's a, it's a, it's a nice visual just to show how many different schools we have in district, the varied school start times, the varied population in each school, and the amount of buses each school uses. It really, um, when you look at it, you, you realize it is a puzzle when we, um, when we're really kind of picking different, different start times and how we're gonna lay out all those different schools to have the best fit for, for our community. And in doing that and looking at our puzzle pieces, there, we, we've, we've come across a few things in, in working through the scenarios, and, um, and one of those is that every sc, not, not every school, but for some schools, uh, you know, two to eight buses are running below 50% capacity. So we, we're also discussing ways that we're going to be able to better plan for this, and one of those is we'd like to institute a bus pass program. Uh, it's no fees, but, but families would register, so we can have a better track of the amount of students that are actually taking the bus day-to-day. So, uh, when it comes to routing the buses, we can do that more efficiently and hopefully, um, you know, potentially opens, opens some other options we might not have currently. Um, and that would just be done as just an extra checkbox, um, at the beginning of the school year when parents are entering their information into Aspen. So, um, again, it's very preliminary, preliminary, uh, work we're doing right now. It's really gonna come down to, uh, what the research directs us to, but by doing this work early, we should be able to save some time later and really come up with the, the best possible solution. So, there are no slides. And then, next, yeah.
Uh, great, thank you, uh, thank you, Kevin, and Jonathan, and Bonnie. So, uh, just, uh, just to conclude, and certainly, uh, can open it up if you have questions. We, um, we, we again are, are thinking about, excuse me, the longer term here. And hopefully, uh, you have a sense, and that was ultimately the purpose of tonight, to fill you in a little bit on the work that has been going on. And it's not been a little bit of work, it's been a lot of work, um, that I can tell you. And again, you saw the, many members of the, uh, of our wider Wilmington community who are participating in this effort, and they are a great group, and again, working very hard towards this end. The effort here, the end goal is to provide you as a school committee, again, with a, a final report that undoubtedly will include a number of things. It will include a, a brief overview, it's not meant to be a dissertation, it won't be, uh, but certainly an overview of what the research points to. Um, that seems to be the starting point for why we're even engaged in this work. It will inevitably include, uh, an overview of options. There will not be a single option. Um, I, I, I'll, I'll bet you more than a dollar on that, but I, um, I'm not sure how high I'll go, but there will be more than one, and each will have implications. Uh, those implications could include cost for the number of buses, uh, they could include the length of the travel time, they could include what time the elementary students might have to start, and what time the secondary students might have to start, and everything in between. And there will be, there will be options, but that's deliberate, uh, for you as a committee and ultimately the community to, um, to consider. And, um, and, and you know, I think it is important to point out that typically, um, the, uh, the, the school committee does not necessarily uh, need to get involved, uh, around start times. Um, I think that that, from my understanding, is, uh, is, is within the purview of administration. But clearly, if we're making a significant change in start times and/or engaging in mon, the monetary aspect that perhaps could lead to more buses, which is a budgetary piece, it is only appropriate, um, I think, that the school committee's involved, and that's why this is set up in this way. And I think the final piece to underscore, uh, is that there, once this report is delivered to you, uh, it's with intention that there's time, uh, to gather more information, more feedback, more perspective, um, before any kind of final decision is made. So, um, with all of that, uh, I want to thank again, uh, the members of the start time committee who, uh, who took the time out of their evening to be here, and if you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Mr. Finley?
I just had one very brief comment, the website is live now, so.
I didn't want to speak too early.
No, I, I understand.
I just want to say that, you know, I, I really appreciate, like, all of this stuff about the school start times. Having, um, a teacher in the Boston Public Schools, and Boston paid lip service to all of this work, um, and about, and really the way it worked out in Boston was, you know, it was like three years ago, maybe they sent out an email with all the new start times for every school in the city, um, and everybody freaked out, and they had to pull it back and roll it back, and it was a, it was a, it was a mess, it was a debacle. So, um, this process, I just, I appreciate everybody's work and attention to it. Um, the community outreach, I think, is one of the hugest parts, um, of this, so that everybody is involved and knows why this is so important. So, um, you know, that's just my comment, I like it.
Couple of quick questions, again, cart before the horse, kind of gal. So, um, I was intrigued in reading, um, the, that less than 50% of the buses are at capacity, and I think that in itself is a dilemma because you want to make sure kids aren't on the bus for more than, I think it's 45 to an hour in that transportation. Do you, my first question to that piece is A, are you seeing, and I know it's limited, um, but are you seeing, um, over the period of time, more increases in parent drop-offs, um, as a reason for that? I mean, are you seeing more, I mean, I just?
Well, I, I guess, um, first of all, I probably don't have the depth of the information to answer that right now, but I would also then say that part of the changes would vary school, school to school as well because the, um, the, um, the parents' need, uh, for getting students to and from school will be different at, at the different levels as we progress through the, uh, through that time.
So let me rephrase my question, in your experiences, okay? Have you noticed with your experience at the middle school over the past couple of years, and, and maybe, and I know this is your first year at the Woburn Street, so that may not be as?
Shawshank.
Oh, Shawshank, forgive me, I'm sorry. Sorry, late at night, not enough caffeine, um, as well as the high school. Um, have you noticed an increase over the time that you've been, you know, respectively, to parent drop-offs? I just didn't know, like, whether it be length of time, I just, it, it just, it hits me audibly why it's less than 50%, and I, I don't know what the rationale, you know what I mean, I don't know.
In my time at the, at the middle school, I wouldn't say I would see, uh, dramatic changes year to year. Um, some of, some of the reason we end up with ridership on a bus that may be less than 50, 50% um, is we are, we are scheduling buses for every student in, in, in the district. So even if they're not, um, not, uh, using the bus, if they go to CARES or if they are a car rider, we are, we are still planning that that student does have the option to be able to take the bus. So that does cause some of the problems, and hopefully, more information will allow, um, uh, more efficient scheduling of that.
And just a, whatever you can speak to, I'm interested in the, um, bus, the bus, uh, the bus pass program. Uh, can you give me an idea as to what kind of ideas you, you're working on with that? Is it an ID? I'm assuming that no student will be excluded from the bus, they answered up, and, but I, but I just didn't know how you were gonna?
There were, we, we have, someone had some initial conversation, whether it's an ID or not, but really the, the need of the conversation was that there, um, within, within the student information in, in Aspen, that we're able to actually, uh, families would be able to say, yes, we are going to take the bus, um, or no, we are not, or just give us a little more scheduling information to allow us to do that.
Thank you, Ben.
So, uh, passes maybe, but I'm, I'm not sure.
And can I, if I may just add to that, that, that's something that has been, I know, discussed with our, uh, with at least our transportation director and, and the group, and, and that's certainly something, if that's a, if that's a path that we proceed through, it's most certainly something that we'll come back to the committee and, and certainly to share with the community before the school year ends. Uh, so, so that'll be, that'll be something that will be outside really the specific focus in this body of work, um, but it's part and parcel with the overall analysis of transportation and routing and everything else in between.
I was just intrigued by that, I wonder what, you know, thoughts around it, but thank you very much, Mr. Finley.
One thing that I want to, um, comment on is that even though this work is primarily geared towards the, you know, the potential start, start times in, uh, 21, 22, it's hard to reach out that far. But, uh, not all of this, I, I think one of the, the benefits is that not all of this is gonna have to wait until then. And so especially with some of the things that, you know, with bus options and so forth, um, some of that can be implemented next year. Not just the bus pass program, but some of the, the insights as far as trying to kind of, you know, shift the, um, some of the times and deal with the capacity and so forth. So, um, not, not all of the insights, um, gained from doing this kind of work and looking at these scenarios, um, not everything is gonna have to wait till the, the following school year. I know that there are already some changes, um, that are kind of percolating for, uh, to try and make the, the transportation better, you not have to wait two years to make transportation improvements.
Not to put her on the spot, I won't, but it's at the advantage of having Lisa here as our, our new transportation director with a new set of, a new lens to look through, um, and at our system and be able to, and I know she's already, uh, developed areas where things can be, to your, to your point, tightened up, adjusted just a little bit here or there, um, that can have a, a significant potential, um, when you're talking about the number of buses and the, and the number of routes that are run every single day, so.
Um, I also wanted to ask a little bit about the, um, the timeline for outreach, so I know that, so now that we have the website up, so that's great. It sounded like we're kind of on the threshold, on the cusp of starting to reach out and gather feedback and surveys. Is, is that correct, that this, that this is gonna be happening, you know, very, very soon?
As a, as a, as a whole committee, we're working on that idea, when we're ready to do that, what, you know, what questions. So we, at my subcommittee, our subcommittee has developed a quite extensive bank of questions and surveys and all that, whatnot. And I think that, you know, fairness to, to everybody, we need to discuss and then figure out where we're gonna go. But yeah, we're, we're starting to, I think, need feedback, so.
Yeah, and, and to, to add, you know, part of this outreach and a focus on relying upon this group to think strategically about that is not just outreach between now and when the report's brought to this committee, but it's after that point in which any recommendations are made, and then it's leading up to ultimately the fall of next year when you might be making a decision. My thinking around this in hope is that there should be every single parent guardian in Wilmington who is well aware of this work, who's not caught off guard, and when you do, hopefully, make whatever decision it is in the fall, there will be a wide-scale awareness, uh, by our community of the fact that you're engaged in this work and what the outcome will be. That, to me, is the heart of this outreach piece that starts now and, and will continue really for the next, uh, almost year, potentially, so.
Uh, and then along, along that line, I wanted to, um, ask about what we kind of envision as this, um, outreach happening between June and September. Um, so that's, you know, covering, the, the summer is not primarily a time when families are thinking, you know, about school and connected in that same way. What, uh, kind of what level of contact and feedback are we hoping to accomplish between, between then, between those days?
Good question, I think, uh, some of that will probably still need to, uh, not probably, it still will need to be worked out. Um, I think, again, though, it goes to, to the heart of it. If we have, if we have this presentation that comes before you in May, as is currently planned, it's not gonna be very long after that summer recess will be here. And then, if you're talking about the potential of, of having you as a committee take a vote, um, or make a decision at some point in the early fall, not a lot of time period in between. So part of that thinking is, we, we'll be framed in some way by what your thoughts are. What your thoughts are based upon what might be in that report, what, if there's any more additional information that you think might be helpful, uh, to gather. Understood that it's the summer months, but certainly still thinking about what that might look like or to be able to take advantage of. Uh, and maybe there's not a lot over the summer, but maybe there's a plan that comes to fruition that will hit, uh, immediately once school starts next September to gather more information leading towards, again, you to, to be able to make an informed decision.
Yeah, I guess I think that, I think we need to sort of seize that time from mid-May Yeah, I guess I think that, I think we need to sort of seize that time from mid-May to kind of mid, late June to try and get this process really working while people are thinking about it, because hopefully that they've already participated in some of this outreach in March and April. And then we have this, you know, committee presentation with the report, and that, I think that if, if we don't get too much of it then, then the summer hits, and then suddenly, like you're saying, we're back in September, and no one's thinking, no one's been thinking about it for a couple of months, and suddenly we're taking a vote on a major change. And I think that we want to, you know, make, make sure that we utilize that time before the end of the school year as well as we can to really get the, the community well informed.
All right. Thank you very much. So pleased to see the work that's gone into this, and I think, just like the strategic plan last year, it feels like this is so well organized, and the subcommittee is doing such fabulous work, and so we're really grateful for all the work that everyone's put in. So thank you, and those of you in the audience, thank you for all your hard work.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, we're going to take a five-minute recess. Ooh, I wish I could get some of that. Is that what it's called?
That's a motion.
Oh, sorry. Would you like to make a motion?
I would love to make a motion.
All right. Would you second it, Mr. Raskin?
Move for a five-minute recess?
For a five-minute recess.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Thank you very much.
That's unanimous. All right, I guess we're good. Are they going to get, okay, they're good. All right, moving right along, we, do I have to have a motion to come back in? I'm joking. I was kidding, that was a joke. 8C, FY, FY19, financial audit. Is that Mr. Rager?
It is.
All right.
Thank you. As you are aware, every year, September, October timeframe, we have to prepare a report and submit it to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, essentially accounts for every penny that comes into and goes out of the district. After that is sent in, an outside auditing firm comes in to each of the districts and just goes over their report and so forth. So this is the report from our outside auditors. And similar to the past many years, we had one compliance item, which was, it's part of the end of the year report, not only is it funds that are coming out of the school committee, our budget, grants revolving and so forth, but also the town allocates costs to the schools. For instance, our public buildings department works under the, under the town, but they have custodians in the school buildings. We have costs allocated. The same method's been used forever, really, but there's not a written agreement. So I have been working with the new finance director, town accountant, to come up with a, really just to write down the process they go through each year to allocate costs to us. So that's what this finding is, and we hopefully this year will have something in place, so. Other than that, everything was found to be fine in the end of the year report, so.
Thank you. Question?
What's this section about indictments?
I was hoping you missed, you didn't see that one.
Actually, that's, will you give our announcement about the basketball?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Breaking news?
For our huge viewing audience, the girls' basketball team won.
Yay.
I don't know what the score was, but I understand that Jen, Jen was saying they scored more touchdowns than the other team.
Anyway, moving right along, we have 8D, Student Opportunity Act. Dr. Brand and Dr. Regan, is that right?
I'll start briefly, then I'm going to turn over to Dr. Regan. Oh, boy. All right. The, in your packet there is both a memo from Dr. Regan as well as a presentation, and just a bit of context quickly before I do turn it over to him. This is something that is very fluid, if you will, in terms of the information that has been forthcoming from the Department of Education. In fact, really, guidance only released just a short couple of weeks ago, and some deadlines for all of the school districts in the Commonwealth, at least as I understand it, for April 1st. So there's a lot of work involved. I know there's been a lot of attention, of course, throughout the media and our various associations about this tonight, is the intention to briefly provide you with an update on, on the Student Opportunity Act, as the, with the information that we know at this point in time, and what some of the obligations are for us as a district and as well for you as a school committee as it relates to the requirements by April 1st for the Student Opportunity Act. Not a lot of time and a lot of work to be done in some respects. But with that, Dr. Regan, thank you.
Thank you. Can't get it, oh, there we go. Okay, so the Student Opportunity Act was recently passed, and it's important, I think, for the committee and for the community to know that, yes, this does provide additional Chapter 70 funds to schools across the Commonwealth, but 80% of those funds are going to 35 districts that have identified as having large populations of students that are economically disadvantaged or English language learners. Wilmington as a minimum aid district will see a similar increase to Chapter 70 funds, including the SOA money that we've seen for the past few years. So while, you know, out there sort of publicly, what you're hearing is about this huge influx of, of dollars to public schools, yes, that's happening, but districts like ours, we're not seeing a, a more than typical increase in Chapter 70 funds. I, I put that out there because as I go through sort of requirements, I just want folks to keep that in mind, because it doesn't really give us, it doesn't really put us in a position to add programming or add staffing in a significant way at all, above and beyond what we've already proposed in the FY21 budget. It does require all districts, regardless of how much money they're getting, to do a three-year SOA plan, which is what we're in the process of working on a draft of right now. So just as a matter, of course, for you and for the public to see, I just mentioned that our, our increases will be sort of on par with what they've been in the past, and these increases are based on the enrollment that Wilmington has. So you can see, it's been right around, right above or right below $100,000 annually since FY19. So our FY21 allocation, including the new SOA money, is an additional $96,600. And so that money was sort of, if you think of it, already considered when we were thinking about building the FY21 budget. This is not money above and beyond that. Some of the guidelines that came out from the Department of Ed, which did come out in early February, so the timeline is really tight, there's an April 1 deadline for the plan, and their guidelines came out in early February. So, this looks like the same exact, I'm sorry. There we go. So April 1 deadline, the state was really clear that the plan should not be a comprehensive school improvement plan or district improvement plan or strategic plan. They know that we already have those, so they really want us to use them to focus, as they say in quotes there, I put a few, doing a few things well. It, it requires us to address, all districts to address what they call four commitments, which I'll go over in a, in a future slide. In districts that receive less than 1.5 million, which Wilmington is in that category of additional funds, we need to complete their short form template, which is, still addresses these four commitments, but has a very simplistic budget template that we have to fill out, which is, we're thankful for. And then the last piece is the district wants us to make sure, the, sorry, the state wants to make sure districts are including the community in some of these conversations around how funds would be spent. So I talked about the four commitments, so if you think of this template in chunks, what we first have to do is identify a student subgroup that is performing less well than sort of the aggregate or other subgroups. And we need to use our student achievement data to sort of identify that group. That's step number one. Number two is to identify an evidence-based program that we would use to help close that gap that we've identified in step one. I'll talk about what those evidence-based programs are in a moment. The state gave 17 different options that districts can choose from to sort of help us focus efforts across the state, but that is step two, identifying those programs or program that we would use. The second, the third piece rather would be, you know, what are you going to do to monitor the progress of students? What metrics will you use and what targets will you set? And for metrics, you can use state data, MCAS data, chronic absenteeism, you know, whatever it is that you want to use from the accountability matrix, to local data targets, if you want to choose. If it was something in elementary literacy, we might want to use our local assessments as another data point, and it could be a combination of all those things. And then the last piece is sort of how the community will be woven into this work. They want us to really outline, if you're helping this population using this program to meet these metrics, it shouldn't just be the schools. How are you engaging families and other community partners in the process? So there are 17, I'm sorry, there's a typo in this first bullet, Desi has identified 17 of the following, so 17 programs to help districts focus our efforts. We are in the early stages now of looking at these, and in the next few days, as a leadership team, we will be able to give some recommendations in terms of which of these we think would be a good focus area for Wilmington, based on our data. And what I did here is I took the, the column on the left, and then anywhere where I thought the programs identified by Desi aligned to our strategic plan initiatives, I put those on the right-hand side, just so you could start to see that some of the things that the department is identifying aren't even connected to the work we're already doing, and that would, I think, would make those less likely to be options for us. So just quickly, you're talking about things like expanding access to full-day pre-K, expanding early literacy programming and PK in early elementary schools, implementing an early college program at the secondary level, curriculum alignment and implementation. I won't read all these to you, but, you know, you can see them, and, you know, adding staff for supporting student, just holistic student needs, or adding co-teaching inclusion opportunities, dropout prevention, these are just some of them. Continuing on, diversifying educator administrator workforce, you know, recruiting and retaining educators in hard-to-staff schools, that wouldn't be something that would necessarily apply to Wilmington, community partnerships for enrichment and wraparound services. And finally, improving labor management partnerships and improvements to facilities to create safe and healthy school environments. So these are the 17 that the state has, has come up with as, as options for us to look at. And like I said, we've, we've started to go through these step by step to see if, you know, which ones are really aligned with some of the work that we're doing. You know, one that sticks out, for example, might be around adding staff to support student holistic needs. We know that we've already got proposed in the budget additional staffing around special education and social emotional learning to support students there. That could be a place that we could, if you will, earmark money from the SOA, which is really not new money, but say that this is, you know, where this additional Chapter 70 money is going to go towards hiring a school social worker or whichever one that we've already got in the budget. So that's just one example of something that we're starting to, to discuss at this point. And we put together just a rough timeline, it's very tight, but after tonight, sharing it with the school committee, we would start getting our heads wrapped around this again and, you know, reviewing those commitments and, and completing a draft SOA template. And then as early as next week, we would share that template with the district leadership team. We have a meeting next Friday with them, so we'd share it a few days before. We'd have a discussion and get feedback from DLT on the 6th, and then we would have this period of time where we would come up with plans to receive feedback from school communities, staff, you could include students at the secondary level, parents, community members, you know, what, what does that look like? It could be as simple as the school committee has a, an additional public comment section or identifies a public comment section for SOA specifically. It could, you know, there could be other ways that we could, we could push this out for feedback. The caution I have there is, we don't want the public to think we're asking for feedback for a large amount of money that we're, that we're receiving above and beyond that we didn't expect. So it's, it's sort of balancing that message, so people really know what we're seeking feedback on. And then we would come back to you on the 11th with that draft and any feedback that we've received, and then two weeks after that, the school committee would be asked to vote on the plan. We can still submit it to the state if the school committee isn't ready to vote on the 25th of March. They're clear about that, it can still be submitted. There's a box on the bottom where you check when your committee has voted and what the result of the vote is. If we're not ready on the 25th, we still submit it on the 1st, and then we would come back, and I don't know what the procedure would be if there were going to be changes at that point. I suppose we'd have to submit a new version up to the state. There's going to be a portal that they're going to open that will submit all this up through. But that's the tight timeline that we tried to put in. If we can do all this, that would mean that we would have, hopefully, an affirmative vote days before we would have to actually submit, and then it can all just be submitted and, and we can move forward from there. So that's all I have to present information to you, but we're happy to take questions, folks.
I'm sure the portal will come out June 1st.
Let's hope not.
Any questions or comments?
Just on the parent outreach and stake, and stakeholder part, are you, how much of the, how much of a, I just want to try to phrase this right. How broadly are you going to try and reach out with, with this kind of feedback and input versus kind of trying to frame it for the community, like, here are some of the options? I mean, it's, I, I think that this is one of the places where the law is a little bit vague, because it says that it shall be, you know, shall consider input and recommendations from parents and stakeholders and educators. So that makes it sound as though they really are supposed to be kind of consulted at the very beginning in the formation of the plan, but just kind of, you know, throwing out to the community, saying, oh, we need to create this plan, and here are the four commitments it needs to make, and what are your thoughts? I mean, it's, you know, there's, it seems that we need to, you know, have some kind of, you know, framework for, for the community to work with it, and we can't just sort of say, just like, oh, we want your feedback, what should our plan look like?
I agree.
Within four weeks.
Right, oh, yes. And by the way, we need to submit it by April 1st, so, you know, get back to us quickly.
My, my thinking is that, given, given the amount of funds, which is not really anything over what we're typically receiving, I think it should be incumbent upon us as a leadership team to present a draft to the community and ask them for feedback on that draft. I think it's a little disingenuous, and I'm sorry if I'm talking out of turn here, but disingenuous, as you're sort of, you know, to say to the community, hey, we're getting $96,000 in additional Chapter 70, how would you like us to use it? Which I know some of the districts that are getting tens of millions of dollars are engaging in that kind of work. But I think it would send the wrong message, thinking, well, gee, we'd like a dropout prevention coordinator. Can we hire that person? When that's just not realistic.
And if I may just add, that is a point of the tension, as, as Dr. Regan pointed out, and that is that there is an actual box that has to be checked, that as a school committee collectively have, I forget how it's phrased, but stated that you've, you've gathered feedback from the community, in, in whatever form that looks like. And so time is limited, you, you understand that point here, there's, there's very little time, but at the same time, as a, as a governing body, we, we do need your guidance, if you will, in terms of what you're comfortable with, in terms of what this outreach looks like, because you do have to effectively sign off on that, which is, is, is part of the challenge here.
Could we run it as, like we do the budget with the hearing or a public comment type thing at our, on the 11th?
Certainly, yes. That certainly, within that context of outreach, that certainly, from what we've, in, in fact, I believe it was the MASC Association of School Committee, the MASC suggested that as one means. I believe it was that, that body that suggested that could certainly qualify as one means of, of outreach, so.
If I could, I would suggest if we went that route, you'd have, the committee would have to decide whether you want that draft from us to be out there along with the invitation, so that they know that this is the draft, we're having this, the hearing about the draft specifically, which we can certainly get in, in this timeframe, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. In advance of that, sure.
Sure. Mrs. Burns?
I just had a quick question, and it's been a while since I read up on the SOA. So in looking at your presentation, the monies dispersed, don't, aren't we getting, granted, it's not a lot, isn't some of these monies going towards our circuit breaker expenditures as well as the homeless transportation? I, I can't remember which areas that SOA is going to fund, and I know from what you said, you know, we weren't, we're not one of those, you know, districts that are going to be receiving a huge windfall, but taking into consideration what you needed to submit to DESE and these two budgetary items, I, I just would like to get up, wrap around on that.
My best understanding is that the circuit breaker is not part of this piece. There is something in the, the Student Opportunity Act where there's talk about circuit breaker reimbursements for transportation costs. From what, looking at, at what was out there from the DESE, as an example, a district might get from one year to the next year incremental- get from one year to the next year incremental $15 million in Chapter 70 funds. Of that, a million is for recurring expenses. And what I say 10 million, so nine million is, is related to SOA funds. And they, that would be, a district would do this long form and I'm guessing that they would have to, you know, how do we spend that incremental $9 million and use the community and so forth and then fill out a long form which has a lot of text, but also some budgetary information in there. I'm going to hire, you know, three teachers, three social workers, whatever it might be. But the, the circuit breaker reimbursement will be out there at some point. We actually have a meeting at SCENE next Friday, I believe, where Jay Sullivan from the DESE is going to come and meet with special education student support service directors, business managers, kind of talk about how that's going to work, the circuit breaker reimbursement for special education, transportation costs.
Okay. Great, thank you.
But I'm thinking that's not part of this because no one really knows how it's going to truly work yet.
It's just so, it can be, for my level of understanding, it can be a little confusing because not knowing the details as you do, it's, okay, so where does this come into play here? And it's like, ah, I don't see it, so.
That's above and beyond the 26, six.
The way it looked, because the supplemental documentation that came with, from the DESE had a document that essentially showed the 35 districts that have to do this long form. And the form was set up, you know, FY '20, Chapter 70 funds, FY '21, the increase, and then there was a column that said to be used or can be used for, or suggested to be used for, I'm afraid, to be used for recurring expenses. And then the difference would be SOA funds, if you will, right? So recommended minimum Chapter 70 amount towards SOA programs and recommended maximum Chapter 70 amount towards ongoing expenses. And House Budget Two has, you know, an increase in, increase in aid. You know, so as an example, I'll take one here. One district, you know, $21.8 million of increased Chapter 70 funds. So just the Chapter 70 funds from FY '20 to '21, increase of $21.8 million, of which 5.1 is a maximum amount toward ongoing expenses, 16.7 is a recommended minimum Chapter 70 amount toward SOA programs.
Okay. So it's, it partials it out?
Yeah, so it's saying, it's talking Chapter 70. It didn't get into this, you know, circuit breaker transportation purely, at least according to this, talking Chapter 70 funds and the incremental that. And as, as Dr. Regan said, a lot of this money was for districts that had higher populations of ELs and economically disadvantaged students, I think, and rightfully so.
Absolutely. Thank you for that information.
Because the Student Opportunity Act covers several aspects of school finance and funding and so there's the circuit breaker, Chapter 70, charter school reimbursements is a totally different part of it. So the, what we're, what we're looking at, what the plans are tied to is strictly the Chapter 70 funding, which is just one kind of part of what the law covers. I think it's also worth, worth noting, which I know, which I know Dr. Regan said several times, that this isn't really anything new. This is like the $30 minimum per pupil increase is exactly what we've gotten for the last several years. It's exactly what we would have gotten this coming year if they hadn't enacted and signed the SOA. It's, it's just no different where, you know, a minimum aid district and so it's exactly the same thing that we would already have. We're getting no new money in Chapter 70 funds. Again, the circuit breaker and some of this other stuff, who knows exactly how that'll shake out, but, you know, no new Chapter 70 money for us. Again, it's being reserved for districts with higher needs. One other thing I just want to mention, which, which I, again, it's like, you know, you sign a law at the end of November and then four months later, it's kind of like, hey, how about submitting these plans that, that we won't even have guidance for you at until, you know, six weeks ahead of time.
Sounds like the MCAS.
Until six weeks ahead of time. And, but one thing that I take some comfort from is that there is some recognition, you know, at the department about this, that this is, this is not the ideal circumstance and situation and way to get these plans written. And some of the language that they have for guidance is, say, we are asking for short, succinct plan documents, even from districts submitting the long form. And so, I mean, they're, they're looking for it, just kind of just, you know, give it, give it, give us the basics of what we need here. And, you know, they're not expecting, as they said, they're not expecting some kind of long-form detailed strategic plan.
There, there is a sample plan that's in its two pages, just so you get a sense of what we're talking about.
So, you know, we, I mean, we obviously, you know, we have to do this, we have to, you know, properly, you know, comply with the law, but hopefully this won't be too big of a, too big, too big of a burden.
Shouldn't be.
Good? Okay. Thank you very much. All right, that brings us to a very, a quick update. It's a very similar to the update that we gave you last week during the subcommittee report. I think I need that clicker, Dr. Regan.
Right.
Oops.
I agree.
I don't know, what do I do? Do I do something? Did you press play? Or did you just pass it?
I didn't think I pressed play.
Let me put it back on the slide.
No, the next, the next PowerPoint.
No worries. So these were some of the thoughts and recommendations that came from the Family Community Outreach Subcommittee. Now I press, anything? Okay, nothing? Now do I press, I'm sorry, do I press play or just click?
To the right.
To the right, just goes, okay. All right. So I've, we've already kind of talked about this, but this is an opportunity for you to tell us what you think and to give us some ideas so we can sort of move ahead as we, when we, when we meet again. So chime in, committee, as you wish. I'll start with the presence at events. And so some of the thoughts we had were to have a signup form, so something just a bit more systematic, so it doesn't feel as though we're either learning about things too late or we, some of us are maybe going, but we don't always know, but a place where we can actually see who's going to be where at a certain time, we thought might be helpful. We thought we would talk to Ken Lord about that. And some of the things that we came up with as, as possible events were sporting events, concerts, art shows, theater, science night, end of year events, and then, and of course, any ideas that you have, we would, we would add, add that and then add things as they obviously come up. For example, the robotics, that was something that came up tonight. I was like, oh, that would be really interesting if people were able to, a couple of us were able to be there and support. And I know that we can't be at everything and we can't do it all, but it would be nice, I think, to, to make an effort and to do it either, I mean, I know we do things as parents, but to sort of maybe be there as a school committee member, it's just wearing a different hat. So are there any comments on, on this particular?
Just a preliminary thought as you bring it to Ken. If the event calendar, I've seen, I've seen my, and over the several years, certain events where you'll get alert, you know what I mean, whether you can maybe going, you know, you could either accept, you know, or decline, but it comes up as like, almost like an alert, maybe to an email, new event or something. If we had something to kind of bring to our attention so it just not, I don't want it to get buried in emails, but if it's sort of, if it comes up, you know, an alert as opposed to having to manually think, oh yeah, I've got to go to the calendar.
You signed up for that.
Because I know that there's a lot of things that I would, that I've enjoyed in the past are the traveling authors, I don't know. I know the PACs typically bring that in for their schools. Those are wonderful, absolutely wonderful presentations. You know, the children's authors that do come in and take questions from students and those are great events that I haven't seen in a while. Maybe they, they're just not bringing, you know, there's no opportunity over the past couple of years, but things like that, so that it's like maybe a week or so in advance. I don't try and, you can only do the best you can, just so the schedules, if I have to reschedule, you know, coordinate my schedule to accommodate that, I'd like to.
Okay, yeah, no, I agree. Perfect. When I think that we, I think, so that's sort of two things. One is having, putting things on a calendar ahead of time that we know are coming up. So there's those. And then there are other things like that that do pop up a week or two in advance and some of us are like, oh, if I'd known, I would have been, I would have attended that or I would have switched something around. So, and then once people do sign up, I think adding it as just a calendar invite and people can accept it, then that puts it right into your calendars and will offer you those reminders as you get a little closer to the event. So I think we could probably do a combo of both.
Sounds very, thank you.
Other thoughts or ideas? Mr. Exdale?
Just a kind of, without trying to get too much into the weeds, that, I mean, if this is done through like, you know, like a, sort of a master Google Calendar of some kind, then, I mean, I think it would be useful to break events into different categories that there are separate individual calendars that can be kind of checked and unchecked because I think if everything going on in the district is in there, if we're talking about every single sports game and, you know, every community event, every presentation and so forth, that, that could be a little bit overwhelming to even know. It's like, what do I even do here? I think that being able to navigate that is an important part of, of, you know, making this useful.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anything else on presence at events? Committee, do you want to add anything? Did I miss?
Goes.
Covered it? Okay.
Covered it?
The next slide was something we had discussed at the retreat, the liaison to schools or a subcommittee. And this, I guess, separate from, and correct me if I'm wrong, but separate from just going to a basketball game, for example, this is something I think a bit more structured and hopefully meeting your needs as a school committee, like I really wanted to see blank. Visiting authors could be one of those sorts of things, or I really wanted to see launchpads at the middle school. And so then kind of collecting the ideas of things that maybe you'd like to see in the schools, putting that out there and then having obviously no more than three of us attend, but we could go together, or it could be individuals checking some of those things out. This would require obviously a different type of planning, but I think that Dr. Brand seems to be on board with helping to organize us.
Some of the, the thing, I mean, I think with regards to the calendar piece, I mean, we have STEM fairs and, forgive me, my mind is going blank. There is analog devices come in and they do, on a school day, and they do these experiments and different, those are great, those are great times, you know, to participate and see that learning and the kids learning and these adults, that's another piece. I guess I'm, I'm, I'm not of any opinion because anytime, been, I've been curious into seeing something with our new curriculum being executed in the pilot stage, it's been no, there's no barriers to say, hey, Glenn, I'd like to go in and see this presented somewhere. Is there, you know, can you help me set that up? Can you set that up? Can, you know, so I, I, I don't know. I think it, you know, I think.
Sure, it's always available. Right.
Exactly.
It's always available. I just don't know if we're taking advantage of it quite as much as we could, is sort of my thought, but.
I think one of the ideas that we were talking about is sort of having this be a little bit more of a formalized thing where people would go and then they would report back to the rest of the committee about what they saw and what's happening. You know, sort of from their, you know, from their perspective, rather than just, you know, you know, as an individual committee member, curious about this new science program or this new whatever. It's, you know, it's having, you know, one or two people go and being able to report back to the committee what it is they saw, if anything stood out or, I mean, it's, that was, that was the idea, I think, behind this versus the, what sort of is happening now.
So this is sort of task-based?
So, so, I mean, this was in, I think, when we were talking at the retreat about this idea of a liaison, maybe we, well, could we, could have one, what's the name? One school committee to a school, or would there be subcommittees that traveled from school to school? This was sort of our way of addressing that. Like, well, what if there were specific things we wanted to see in the school committee as a whole, said, I'd really like to see PBIS in action. Oh, so would I. And so then three of us would go, sort of everyone having to do it, we'd come back and then share out a little bit of what we saw. So it's sort of in place of, I guess it does become a bit of a subcommittee, but it doesn't have to be an established subcommittee every time, that the membership can change depending on what it is we're going to see.
For me, there's, there's a ton of things that I would like to see in the schools, but because of my job, there's no way I can, I can do that. So I think this is one way for, you know, if anybody, you know, now or in the future has, you know, restrictions where they can't get into schools, it's a way to sort of have, keep the committee informed about what's going on.
And I think this, we talked about this as a good way with working with the central office, if they know about programs that we might potentially want to see, that they, we can work collaboratively to be able to see more programs, to be able to, you know, be more active in seeing some of this stuff versus just, you know, two years down the road, oh, I might want to see how this math program's been implemented for the last two years. You know, so being more proactive with seeing some of the different things that are being implemented in every building.
And this was just a list we came up with sitting there, just quickly. Mr. Feneliam, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I really liked this idea. I mean, to be clear, I liked all the ideas in the, in the presentation, but I thought this was great in that, you know, it gives us sort of this revolving opportunity to see things that we're hearing about, learning about, voting on in these meetings in actual action. And also, I mean, at least for me on a personal level, my kids are in the elementary schools. I don't have a whole lot of connection to the middle school or the high school and so to be able to be involved in those things and see those things, even on a smaller level, I think would be really impactful. So I, actually, I really appreciate this, so I'd support that.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
I think, just as a thought process in this piece, a lot of these pilots, things that are, we're piloting within district, I think that would be, especially prior to it coming before, back to the board, you know, through the superintendent's report perhaps, or, you know, that's all, that's where I could see that to be beneficial, saying, you know, we're wrapping up this pilot, would anybody like to see it prior to the, you know, the end due discussion? I think that would be most instrumental and I don't think often utilized, but then, you know, it's kind of, but that's, it would, it would be, you know.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Are we good? Oh, Mr. Exdale?
I just want to also say that I hardly approve of this idea of getting us into schools to see some of this important work that's being done. But one thing that I do want to add is that I think that in addition to, you know, the things that kind of come to the, come to the committee, like when we have a new curriculum, you know, it's like, oh, maybe we want to go see, you know, the new Elevate Science curriculum, or we want to see what the reading workshop looks like, how do teachers confer with students during reading workshop? There's a lot of stuff that's been brought to the committee about curriculum and different, different kind of plans. But I think there's also value in just seeing kind of the ordinary, everyday instruction. I mean, and obviously that is, I mean, I don't mean to suggest that like the reading workshop isn't part of the everyday instruction. It is, for example. But it's also just like, you know, how is a math class just taught in fifth grade? That, you know, the, the regular kind of, you know, not necessarily specifically curricular strategic is also important to getting a sense of just kind of like, what is the daily experience of students in the schools and how they're being taught? And so I would also just encourage that type of thing. It doesn't have to always be a specific, like, here, we're going to specifically look at PBIS. It's enough just to say, I'm curious to see how a French class goes at the, at the middle school.
Another point that I would pose to my colleagues is that in light of the Walker Report and the large amount of work that's being undertaken to drive our, enhance our special ed program, I for one had done this as in my, my first term on the board, that I, middle school, I didn't know what that looked like, what their programming looked like, how they did it. And it was very beneficial. I almost got lost in the crowd during the, you know, in between the classes where the kids were and I, they had to put a rope on me just to make sure I followed. But I, it is really helpful to see how, especially in this realm, especially in light of the Walker Report, how that type of program is delivered in our various schools. Because it does, it does differ from the middle school to the high school to the, you know, and it, I, I just, as a point of something to think about, that might be a point of interest as well to consider.
That's helpful. Thank you. Okay. I'm waiting for someone to click that. Communication and building community, so this is, some of this has been happening all along, just trying to make sure that we're capturing things that are happening in the district. And so I, during agenda meetings, I've been trying to be more proactive and just saying, so what's happening? What do we need to do? And so tonight, the robotics, I think some of us had seen it on Twitter and we were like, oh my goodness, that's so great. And so it's, it would be great to have them come in and so trying to be a bit more proactive when we know things are happening. And then some of the other ideas that came up at our meeting, and we think, some of this is. and we think, some of this is familiar, we've done this before, but a cappella, sports teams, you know, having, someone mentioned having a team come in or talk about. And we do the athletics update. It might be fun to have some of the athletes come in. I don't, I don't think I've seen that on my time on the board. Maybe it was done before. And, you know, maybe the All-Stars, highlight of a school. Someone mentioned award winners or finalists, recognizing children in all areas. So arts, sports, academics, SEL, citizenship, cast members of a show. I mean, so this isn't going to be every meeting. I mean, I'm watching, everyone's like, well, wait a minute, you know, Jen. But I think just being proactive and thinking ahead about how to invite the community into our meeting in a way that is structured, but makes sense. But the kids and parents and families are excited to, to be here and be a part of what we're doing. Something else that came up, Mr. Samaha, do you want to just talk quickly about that? About Ms. Mehdi, you had mentioned?
Yeah, I mean, just, you know, being able to, you know, have a, have a place for recognition. You know, I know that towards the end of the year, when there's retire, retirements happening, we recognize them when we've done that. But I think Ms. Mehdi, for example, in particular, I think is, you know, her influence on the public schools here has been huge. So I think, you know, you know, when we have people retiring that have had such an incredible impact, I think we need to make sure that we're doing the right thing.
Thank you. Any other ideas or something you want to bring up so we can put it on our list?
Something that I know I shared with, with you previously was, I think, expanding this to really, in the sense that there's a lot of organizations that support various areas of our school districts. And as we know, that learning doesn't stop when kids walk out of their school. It continues. I think maybe some, and granted, it's rudimentary, bringing in organizations such as the Scouts, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, so that if any interested student, you know, or parents looking for an option for their student after school, has some access to these things that are happening within our community that benefit our students as well as parents, and engaging their parents, engaging the parents in more of these activities that come back to us at the school. Some organizations such as WOW, of course, the WEF, you can't, you know, it may help also drive membership in these organizations to continue to do what they do to benefit our students. I gave you a bunch of lists of things, and I know previously we've had iPods for wounded veterans, which I know this, our schools and students have always supported their mission in supporting our wounded veterans. And, you know, absolutely wonderful. But as I said, there's so many organizations that support our schools and our students either through internships or civic servitude, if that's the right word. But, and highlighting that in, you know, with, I think it's a good plug for them and I think it offers options for our students who are look, maybe looking for something extracurricular outside of a school program.
Absolutely, thank you. Mr. Raxdale?
Just also thinking that I can't remember if we've ever had like an actually in, you know, in-person presentation from any of the PACs to talk about the, the work that they're doing and see if, you know, they could generate some more volunteer interest as well.
Something had come up, we had talked, I think, quickly at one of our last agenda meetings a bit about saying thank you to the PACs and CPAC at the end of one of our later meetings and sort of inviting them. So that would be perfect, having them do a quick update and then just saying thank you for all this work. Because I think you're, we don't always see, I know the PACs are so busy and they're doing so many wonderful things in their schools. And of course, the CPAC, but we don't, well, the CPAC, we do see it, that update, but the PACs, we don't see at all, so. And don't have a chance to say thank you, so I think that's a great idea.
And I think we could all certainly hear from CPAC more than, more than once a year.
I completely agree, yep. All right, thanks. And then finally, we have this communication and outreach, which I know we've talked about quite a bit over the years, but I think, I think we're ready, I think. So one of the ideas that came up at the subcommittee was to elect, appoint a social media administrator. So sort of that we would do this on a, on a yearly basis. Someone would sort of take that on. So I think it wouldn't be you, you do it and all of a sudden it's yours forever or till you're done, you know, you just, we would sort of take turns managing that. And then the ideas were a Facebook page, maybe a Twitter handle. And then this idea of a community topic section at the school committee meeting. Does someone want to talk about that? Do you remember, do you, I'm thinking, I'm just trying to remember. Exactly, I think part of it was if they, we weren't going to have a place for comments or questions, but we were going to be able, yep.
It would be a section where, you know, if people did have input or thoughts, because of, we can't, with these pages, we can't have open discussions because we have the potential of violating the open meeting law. So all of us school committee members, if there's a comment on our Facebook page, we can't all go onto the Facebook page and have, make comments and have discussions because if it's business between, before the school committee, you're going to end up breaking the open meeting law. So that, and our thought was to be able to bring these topics and have a section in our agenda where these topics are presented to the school committee. You don't necessarily have to have comments or whatever, but just a spot to be able to bring all of these topics forward so everybody is aware if they're not necessarily following all the social media pages.
Great, thank you. So any thoughts or questions on that? Yes, Mr. Raxdale?
I'm just trying to have a little bit of a hard time trying to, like, I'm trying to picture in my mind, like, what does this look like? So we set up a school committee Facebook page. Like, what kind of content are we putting on it? What are we hoping to gain from it? Like, is, do we, are we hoping that it becomes a forum for discussion, but one that we can't really participate in? Just that the community, you know, talks about school committee things there because at least they'll know that maybe we're, that we're lurking, I guess, that it's a place where they can.
I don't think that was our intention.
Well, the, okay, but this is, I mean, this is part of why I want to kind of raise this idea, because this is kind of like, try to tease this out and think like, well, what does that become then? Like, what are, what are we hoping for it to be? Is this a, supposed to be a two-way communication? Is this sort of like outreach but also feedback? Or is this just us publishing information that we want the community to have? And so they know that they can go here and it's just one more place where they can get information about what we're doing and the, the issues that we're discussing? Is it just supposed to be a place for us to listen? Where like, we're not going to really say much, but if they want to come here and, you know, and speak their mind, it's just another form of public comment that's not in our meeting? What are, because it could be any of these things.
I think in our meeting, we discussed it more of a, similar to how the CPAC page is set up, is more of a place to push out information and, you know, make it more apparent for the, you know, there's unfortunately, a lot of the community that doesn't know exactly how to reach us. And it gives them another way to reach out to us. You know, we would prefer people to email us and not blast it across social media because it, that's not always a productive way. So I believe it was more of a way for us, and correct me if I was wrong, I'm wrong, to push out information to the public in another way, just to open the door of what we're doing.
I mean, just to add on, I mean, I think that, you know, to what, to what Mr. Raxdale was saying is I, I think it could be any of those things. And I think it would have to be something where we sort of go with that focal point, but then see where it evolves or devolves to.
Couple things, so the administrator could not, there, so it's, so it's not going to be open for comments? Yes, no?
You can't, well.
I only say that only because the administrator, whoever takes this role on, can't speak on behalf of the board, so.
Well, and that's why we would encourage people to come to our meetings. You know, please email the school committee. The, I don't, I wouldn't foresee even the social, the administrator engaging in any discussion because they can't act on behalf of the whole committee. And neither can the whole committee chime in on social media because we'd be breaking the open meeting law.
Obviously, but, but, and I think that's kind of the reason why I'm asking, is it, you had spoken about pushing information out, but are you removing the ability to comment? I guess is what I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand. Because in that role.
We would highly, I believe we would highly encourage people to email us rather than comment. I know the way that it was set up with the CPAC way back when is that comments are pretty much shut off. People can still comment. However, they're, they're highly monitored and you can put in up to 10,000 words that if anyone says this word, it's blacked out until it's approved. And so it is.
So have you, have you searched out, I've got, only, I've got, just, have you reached out to MASC? Because I know there are other districts, this isn't a new conversation or is it a new dilemma before boards? Have you, any, reached out to MASC and other school committees with regards to that? Because it might save you from having to recreate the wheel and having some pitfalls that they may have encountered. I just didn't know if that, if you.
We have not, this is very preliminary. This was a quick 45-minute conversation with the subcommittee and we are just simply bringing it forth to everybody tonight, see what everyone's thoughts are. And we can certainly come back to the, to the subcommittee and do more work on it all. This is just where we were at with our last meeting.
That's what I was asking, the question, because I wasn't, I just wasn't sure.
I've spoken to a few school committee members in other districts who have done similar things and have found it to be sort of evolved from their own, when they were running, for example, their own pages. And then said, oh, it would be nice to have something. So I, I don't use my page very often, but I will use it occasionally just to push out an article that I think is really important for people to see, an agenda item that I think people would want to attend. I usually put some graduation photos up. So take, so instead of it just being my own page, it would be a school committee page to push out some of that information and sort of keep us a little bit more in the eyes of, of the public so that maybe they would feel more comfortable attending, attending the meetings.
But I also suggest, as you guys continue this discussion as a subcommittee, that you might want to lay down protocols of what is or if there's something other members may like to see pushed out. I don't know, I, I think.
Sure, oh, I think that's part of, yeah.
When you get to that point, figuring out what the.
I think tonight is just to say, is this something we're interested in pursuing? If so, we're very happy to, to sort of start doing some of that work. But if it's something that people are, we come here and say, here's our plan, here's what we're going to do, then it's not really fair to, to start doing all that work if people are really opposed to it. So I think this was just sort of, here's some of our original, here's some of our initial thoughts. What are your thoughts before we do anything more than just kind of brainstorm?
I just have to say in that, I, I don't think it's a bad idea, I just don't.
You need more details. That's fine, yeah, I think we can provide that.
I mean, I think the, the other areas which, which I like are the, the calendar of events in that, in that piece. And maybe arranging something where, we had discussed if upcoming pilots that are coming to a close or in, in the middle of the pilot, so that it can accompany a school.
So I think we'll get more details and we'll bring it back.
Okay, and forgive me, I, I'm just.
Sure, yeah, of course.
I may have interpreted the level of it, but I appreciate the discussion.
Mr. Raxdale?
One thing I, I think we also want to think about here is, how does this relate to or complement the district communications? So if we're talking about this as, as, you know, an avenue for getting information out there, presumably, we already have methods of getting important district information out. I mean, we, at least we hope we do. I mean, that's part of our communication and outreach is a big part of our strategic plan as well, at, just at the district level. So I think we'd, we'd also just need to think about what makes this different from or complimentary to our district communication efforts? I mean, I don't think you'd want to, you don't necessarily want to say, oh, if you want to hear everything, here's one more place you have to look in order to get the information that you want. Now, it may just be that, well, people, everyone's on Facebook, so people like getting information from Facebook because they're already there. Although that might be an argument for having a district Facebook page. But just, I think, another thing to think about, like, what is this as a school committee page is going to make it different from something that we would set up just at the district level? Again, if it's not going to be, supposed to be kind of a community discussion, then what precisely do we hope that it becomes? And we don't want to, you know, we want to make sure that we're kind of all rowing together as far as getting our, getting our message out from the, from the district.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other comments before we finish up? All right, thank you. So we will bring back some more information after we meet again. Our next item is 8F. And I think since we actually did not meet in our subcommittee tonight, if it is okay with, with the school committee, if we postpone this, the first and the second readings actually, to our March 11th meeting? Just because I think some of them are going to take some, but at some, some time. And I'd like to not keep us here for too much longer. And we won't have anything new, so there was, again, there was no subcommittee meeting tonight, so we won't have anything new, so is that okay? Mr. C. Okay. So that brings us to, are we okay with that? Head now, yeah, okay. That brings us to other reports. Are there any other subcommittee reports? Nope, okay. Correspondence, Mrs. Burns?
None, this evening.
None. Future school committee dates, we have March 5th is the Wilmington Finance Committee Budget Meeting here in this room at 7:00 PM, I think. A few of us have responded, so please let us know if you do plan on being there. March 11th, we have our next regular session of school committee meeting. March 25th, our regular session of school committee meeting.
I could also add that the February CPAC meeting is tomorrow evening at 6:30 in the library.
CPAC meeting is here tomorrow evening in the library. Thank you. And then some upcoming district events on March 2nd. We have kindergarten registration at the high school. March 3rd, there is no school, Boutwell and Wildwood. March 3rd, kindergarten registration, Wilmington High School. March 4th, Arch of Boz concert at the high school. And March 11th is an early release day for all schools. Seeing nothing further, I'll take one more motion. Is that seconded by Mr. Raxdale? All in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you, everyone, good night.